Let's call the January ninth, two thousand and twenty twenty five meeting to order for the Wall City Council. Carolyn, would you please call roll?
Hoffman?
Morgan?
Here.
Stan Anderson?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Pop?
Here.
Mike Anderson. We do have a phone.
Okay, thank you for listening. I recite the purge of allegiance, please Deputy Oscar.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carolyn, do we have any order of business for emergencies?
We do not.
Do we have attendance on Zoom?
We do not.
Next on the agenda is the police report and we have deputies Port and Austin here. Welcome. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Um, this past month, um, we've been working on the traffic control on Ford, although on Glen Street, um, as well as some other roads on town. I know that we've had several complaints on those two areas and stuff, so I hope that people are gonna start slowing down and we can go from there. Turning that, um, as we all know, it's been snowing and raining the past couple of weeks, so we've been working on accidents and trying to get people slowed down on that as well. Other than that, we don't have much to go over. Any questions?
I see you did have a stolen vehicle, but that wasn't one of them, that was a recovery deal or?
Yeah, that was recovered, um, down in Alonka that actually originated out of Fox Elmer. So we just got dispatched because we're the closest.
May anybody even knows where Alonka is at, actually?
There's, there's a few of us that know where it's at.
So very good. Okay, does anyone have any questions?
I was wondering if we could look into getting that minivan towed on Sixth. It's had to spin up on the jack and a tire.
Yeah, we will definitely look at that, um, after we get it tagged and stuff for 24 hours and then get out of there. Appreciate it. We'll look at it as soon as we're done here. Go from there.
Thank you. Yeah, because Garrett, hasn't that been there for months?
Yeah.
And it looks abandoned.
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely look at it when I say, once we tag it 24 hours from my time, we'll get it taken care of.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Stan has moved?
Second.
Jerry seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Does anyone have a conflict of interest to, um, report or record? Seeing none, would I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December nineteenth city council meeting that were in the packet?
The move.
Stan moved.
Second.
Rick has seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. In the packet also is the, uh, claims for the city of Wall at a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. The fire department claims at three thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents and library claims at one thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars and eight cents. Does anyone have any, uh, questions on any of those items that they'd like to address to Carolyn?
I was just gonna take this time to mention, um, so when I do the electrical bills, I kind of do a copy and paste because I have a certain format and so I was going to January of last year at this time and after the fire department and public works put in that rule thing, man, the electricity bill went way down. It was like a thousand dollars last year at this time and it's like almost less than two hundred. I mean.
On what, Carolyn? I don't understand. Drop in the fire hall. What do you attribute that? We put in a fuel oil furnace last year, spring, last spring. Oh, wow. It's five hundred gallon tank and I think we've used one and a half since we've got it, so. Get those old electric heaters here.
What's that?
Those old electric heaters.
I just, when I was plugging in the numbers, you know, and I'm just like, whoa. That's a big difference.
Is the fuel, uh, is it a new? It's highly efficient one? Sure, yeah. It's new, yeah, they said they shouldn't be, but yeah, we had a, we had electric and then we had like a wood stove heat that we used too, just kind of during the day when we were there, so. So then we just, the wood stove had a blower on in the chimney and everything, so we just put, took out the wood stove and put the, put that right in the fuel oil in there and the tanks inside and
big difference. And well, thank you for whoever organized that, got it installed and now it's saving money, that's good. Do I have a motion to approve the claims? For Wall, for the city, the fire department and the library?
So moved.
Jerry has moved.
Second.
And Stan seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, also in that pa, in your packet for you to review was the on-call schedule, um, for the employee, uh, overtime, sick and vacation. Also included is the water usage report, which of course, uh, shows through December, um, and how much water that we've, uh, gotten from West River Jones, uh, compared to twenty twenty-three. Is there anything significant on that water report, Garrett, that you're noticing or?
Uh, no. A little bit more, we probably used, I mean, actually there's less West River Line and Jones. Um, yeah, it's a little more than we normally use for West River Line and Jones because of the other two wells.
Right.
So.
Absolutely.
But I think I do have those, I have a guy coming to help me with, with one and then he knows an electrician that's gonna help me with four, so.
So that solves that situation, Jerry, comment?
You lost a million, eight hundred thousand for December?
Well, and that is due to, um, the software that I'm using, sometimes it's had to adjust numbers and so then it reflects differently on that, but the bottom number of the five percent loss is kind of what you need to look at. Because it catches up eventually, you know, so. So, yeah, we had a less water loss this year than
Than last year.
I see that, but that million, eight hundred.
I know.
Yeah. Beyond that, Jerry.
They say ten percent under is really good.
Okay, also included in the packet was, uh, in the sales tax for the year as well as the BBB. And again, BBB was up about eleven thousand over twenty-three. Thoughts on that?
What percent of what's up, do you know?
Of the BBB?
No.
Oh.
Mine just.
Eight.
Yeah. Well, that's awesome.
Eight percent up. But I still, I just don't understand that sales tax.
And, and, and the sales tax, what was it down this month? It was, it was up in December. Oh, it was?
And it was up in, or no, it wasn't. I was thinking that it was up in November that we had. Oh, actually it was, November was very strong and November was up, but over the, it was six percent down for the total year, so. And I, uh, if anyone's interested, I did do a sales tax, uh, revenue summary that started back in twenty-eleven. If anyone's interested in looking at that, I, at that, I would be willing to share that also, um. Because
It's in the packet, isn't it?
Actually, I just did this last night, so it didn't quite get in the packet, but, um, the, what I was noticing is in twenty twenty, it was one point one million. I'm talking sales tax, in twenty twenty-one, it jumped up to one point five. And in twenty twenty-two, it was one point five, a little bit down from twenty-one, then it really jumped to twenty-three to one-six. But then in twenty-four, it came back down to one-five. So I don't know if it tells us that twenty-three was just awesome and, uh, we're just kind of on a roll with twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-four or I don't know, but just by going through those tabs on the bottom, that's kind of how, but I can pass that around if anybody wants to look at that. Okay, also in the packet is your expense, uh, budget report, uh, for, starting with January, we're into a new budget.
So it looks good right now.
Yeah, it looks great right now. So we're hoping that that might, uh, continue that way. Okay, any other questions or comments on any of those reports? Oh, yeah, that's a good idea to do that, that's a way to use your technology, Stan, that, good thinking, okay. Uh, at this point on the agenda is twelve public comments, this is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns with the council. With any issue that's not on the agenda, no action will be taken and a person would have three minutes to address their concerns. With that being said, is there anyone that would like to address public comments? Okay, uh, and, uh, we do not have an ambulance report.
No, we didn't.
Oh, you are here for them. Sorry, I didn't reach your jacket. Okay, how about you give us an ambulance report, good job, sir, I'm so sorry.
No, not a problem. Uh, Justin Perkins with the Wall Ambulance Service. Uh, just real quick, just gonna give a summary of the last year for two thousand and twenty-four. The Wall Ambulance Service had a hundred and seventy-two calls for service. Um, this range everywhere from EMS calls to car accidents and, uh, a few standbys for football games and rodeos. Um, not much as far as significant events happened in two thousand and twenty-four, it's basically just business as usual, which is a good thing in our business. Um, for two thousand and twenty-five, I mentioned a couple of months back, uh, police announced that, uh, in conjunction with the Rapid City Fire Department, they received a grant with the state and this grant is designed to get more EMTs in the rural settings. So we are going to be their first, I guess, which would be called a guinea pig, they're going to use the Wall Ambulance Service to offer, uh, free EMT class. So this will be doing, in conjunction with Rapid City Fire Department, it will be done via Zoom, so the individuals will actually take the class here in, in Wall. There'll be a couple of trips between here and Rapid City to do hands-on. But the best part of it is, is they're free to the individuals who take it. To give you an idea, the exact same class held in Rapid City with Rapid City Fire Department is a thousand dollars for tuition. So that's awesome. Um, we can have up to ten people in the class, so we're hoping to get ten Wall residents to sign up. Um, more information will be coming out as we work through the logistics of this. And, uh, yeah, anybody knows of anybody who's, uh, always thought about getting their EMT, but didn't want to drive to Rapid City or the cost was holding them back, this is an excellent opportunity for that, so. That is all I have, any questions for me?
How old do you have to be?
You must be eighteen by the time the class starts in June.
How old can't you be?
There is no restriction. Yeah, use that for an excuse too. So.
Okay.
Any other questions? Excellent, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You say. Okay, item fourteen on the agenda was, this was also included in your packet, this is the maintenance and encroachment agreement. Last month, we updated the service road snow removal agreement, but this is the maintenance encro, encroachment agreement that was set up in two thousand and nine with Dave Hawn. And Mike Carlson indicated it does not need to be updated, that this is what we're using and I just wanted, because it kind of came on nowhere, uh, on another situation earlier, trying to make more people aware, get it in our minutes so that people know where it is and what it says. Uh, so one of the things it does is address the school flashing light. Uh, we had a discussion about that in the meeting, we did have a, uh, DOT. Did they do anything to change that light just yet or?
They, it's repaired, they really, the computer board was bad.
Okay.
So they didn't update it, I know they talked about maybe updating it.
Yeah, but that hasn't happened yet.
But it's working.
So, and that's an agreement between the school, the city and the DOT. And then the other things that, uh, this agreement, uh, actually addresses is like utilities on South Boulevard, speed limits, parking. And then the general ma, uh, maintenance. It's a generic contract, so when you look at page, uh, three and general maintenance, there's, if you're over twenty-five hundred, well, that's written in here, twenty-five hundred population or less, and so that's us. So these are the things that we talked about and I think we have a better understanding of, of what this, uh, what the city, public works for sure needs to do in terms of the South Boulevard, so it was a good discussion. I'm just trying to bring it to light, so more of us people, uh, I guess all of you guys were still, were on this council when this was made in two thousand and nine and, and so you probably had this all memorized, but for some of the rest of us, it kind of come out of nowhere and, and so it's just an opportunity for us to be aware of what's entailed in that agreement. Any comments from you, Garrett, because I think we got some things worked out in that.
We did, and it was a good meeting and kind of, um, opened everyone's eyes to what was going on and what's been missed and
and you taught them some things that they didn't know and we kind of learned some things as far as the street committee, what, that we didn't so much know, so. Okay, so with that, uh, there's not any other comments. Item fifteen is, uh, a resolution for the two thousand and twenty-five wages, is there any comments on the resolution, if not, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I would just like to bring out that I didn't get the updated one sent, if you paid attention to the one that you got in the packet to begin with, I made it early on one of the employees salaries and thankfully they brought it to my attention and we got that straightened out. So if you do a comparison, you'll, that's the reason why, so thankfully people are watching my numbers because I can make mistakes. This is something that needs to be published every January, um, in the paper, by resolutions, so.
Carolyn, what was the general percent increase?
A three percent increase.
Three percent.
Okay. So, any other questions of Carolyn? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution twenty-five oh one, uh, regarding the two thousand and twenty-five wages for city employees.
So move.
Second.
Moved and Rick seconded, any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item sixteen, chamber directory reporting. Thank you for being here, Kate.
It was, it was almost a struggle, but we made it. Um, the final December twenty twenty-four and then the January twenty twenty-five community center report should be included in your packet. And then, um, I did a twenty twenty-four summary for you guys, just because I feel like people don't always realize how often, um, this building is utilized by the community. Um, so for twenty twenty-four, uh, the hall, which when I say the hall, I'm referring to, he's at, um, the, the big room in there, so it was used for fifty-nine events in twenty twenty-four. And events are including weddings, funerals, parties, reunions, banquets and similar type functions. Um, we had seventeen meetings in the hall, um, because they were too large to fit in this meeting room. Uh, there were forty-seven wrestling practices between the high school and the youth. Chairs were rented out on a large scale four times, um, and then this meeting room was rented out two hundred and, or rented out or used here for city use, two hundred and thirty-nine times, so. Um, so you'll see we're replacing the flooring out there in the hallway, went from carpet to a vinyl floor out there. And they'll be replacing the carpet here soon, so, uh, with all the traffic coming through, we're excited to have a few less rules and still be able to keep the space, uh, clean for everyone to enjoy, so, um, does anyone have any questions on any of that? Okay. Um, so for the chamber, uh, we just finished up the holiday sweepstakes, which is always a really fun promotion, uh, to for shopping local and we gave out forty-two hundred dollars in wall bucks, which will then also, we turned around and spent in Wall, and so thank you to everyone who participated and also to the businesses, uh, for being so willing to take the time to fill out the cards and, but we appreciate that. And then we're starting to plan our spring party, uh, we don't have the dates set yet, but that'll be coming soon, uh, last year it was in March, so we're hoping to do that same kind of timeframe again, if, um, we can figure out, and then we'll hopefully do like the cornhole tournament and stuff again, that was, uh, really well received last year, so hoping to do that again. And then, um, our next chamber luncheon is January fourteenth here at the community center. And then our next board meeting will be February seventh, that's seven AM. And then, anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you for doing a good job and keeping this, um, facility, uh, moving and used.
Katie, I heard a number of positive comments on your elf video.
Good, good, that was a good dare by my children. And they say, actually, they behave themselves all the way to my mother's house in Iowa, that was the deal, they had to behave and nobody's. That's right.
Okay, that brings us to item number seventeen, we have had, uh, we've received a concern form. Uh, plus there's been some people that have, uh, stopped by the office too and shared concerns and this has to do with sidewalks and walkways, uh, that haven't been getting cleared and of course, snow has just showed up this week and so, uh, individuals that are walking to, to work are concerned about having to walk in the streets sometimes because the sidewalks are not, uh, cleared. So we're just bringing this, uh, to our intention of the situation, uh, Garrett, you were gonna move forward and have a conversation when you had time, is that true? To kind of work this out, see if that, uh, situation can be rectified, but, um, I would just like to urge all residents and businesses to please shovel your sidewalks or the walkways, uh, with snow, that's our expectation. We really appreciate the cooperation that we do get, uh, from people, uh, because otherwise, if they're forced to walk in the street, whether there's snow or not, it's a dangerous situation. So we appreciate those that have been already on top of getting their sidewalks, uh, cleared. Uh, the interesting thing is that we have brand new sidewalks on most sides of Fourth Avenue. And one of the things we probably didn't talk to them in the spring about was when you get your new sidewalk, who's supposed to clean those sidewalks, Garrett?
The landlords.
The people that live along it. And so I don't know what we could do to remind them that they have a new sidewalk and that they need to, uh, help us out there and, and keep those sidewalks cleared. Um, also Carolyn put in the paper, uh, notices about vehicles that need to be moved, uh, so that snowplows can, uh, work. Uh, what did that notice say, Carolyn, when you put that in the paper, what?
I don't know, it said, one that I put in every year.
Copy and paste, right?
I do, change the dates, yep. I'd have to look.
Okay, well, when I read it, it said that, uh, you're not supposed to, or if there's going to need to be snow removed, we've got to get the vehicles off the street, would that be true, Garrett?
Yes.
Is that helpful? And I do know that
Two inches of snow.
Two inches, yeah.
Two inches of snow, is there any timeframe that's involved?
Just till your street. I, I think it says until the streets have been cleared, doesn't it? I think we should do like they did in California to move those abandoned cars and fire.
Oh.
To frame the DA, not bulldozer.
Yeah, well, let's.
Had to do down the interstate, the slides go around, there's one stuck, um, about the eighty-eight, was when the drivers had to go and hit the snow column, do like, and to me.
I just think we should put Garrett's phone out on publicly and say, hey, call him every night, find out if we're gonna get two inches of snow or not.
Great idea, Jerry. Forward it to yours.
But the main thing is, it is tough on those guys trying to, uh, manipulate fouls and vehicles that are just sitting there. I also appreciate the deputies because I think they've been over on Sixth and asked some plea, people to please get them off that street, you have a nice parking lot there, let's, let's use that, so thank you deputies for doing that. Uh, and then I just want to also, uh, express appreciation to those citizens that when Garrett or Carolyn contacts them or asks them to help us solve an issue that they, uh, work with us and that happens about ninety-nine percent of the time, there's always those people that push back and say we're picking on them or whatever, but most of our people are very good about helping us solve issues, so thank you to those that, that just step up and, and help us solve. So unless anyone else has any other comments about that, about the concern, about the concern or?
I know, I went, uh, by it after seeing this here, um, when we got the packet and they did have it cleared out or they did have their sidewalks cleared for the one listed, the neighbors to the south need to take a page out of their book real quick and do it the same, but.
People to the south are gonna do the same?
They'll get it done, they'll get it done though.
Okay. All right, I, I just want to make sure I heard that correctly and to know what you're, I got it, I got it, I'm with you. Okay, thank you so much.
Garrett, do you just get up early every morning and look out the window?
Sometimes, this morning I didn't. Yeah, normally if it just, if they call for it, usually wake up about three-thirty and look out the window.
And same with you, Zach, thank you DOT for being out there today, Stan had to get to a tax appointment this morning, it was essential that he get to Rapid City, so.
Good thing it wasn't early this morning because they were
Yeah, it was.
Really, yeah. Really icy, we had a, they had the eastbound coming down Wasta Hill, uh, closed off for a while because there's three semis involved in the slide off and one was blocking both lanes.
So they tipped over.
Yeah.
Still one there.
Yeah, still one there, yeah, that's gonna be used tomorrow, so.
When I went like at ten o'clock, I was just grateful that you guys were out there and pushing that off because it was slick and blowing it, so thank you.
Got a phone call even earlier this morning, so we went out right away.
Okay, thank you. For what you do, okay, so any other comments on that? Okay. All right, finance officer report.
Carolyn, I should have probably reversed these, uh, so I bring your attention to the rib supper that the municipal league sponsors every year in February. Uh, we also have one of our board meetings at that same date and that will be on the fourth of April, yes. And so, um, if you're interested in attending, let me know and I'll get you registered, they have that at the, um, drifters at, in Fort Pierce. And you can visit with their legislators and all that and they serve a good supper. Um, Mary and I are both registered for that. So with that being said, uh, first meeting in February. I'm conflicted with that. Actually, I guess it's the yeah, the fourth on Tuesday. Yeah, before, on the Tuesday, that night, and then Wednesday, the fifth, usually um. We have a day to go up to the Capitol and sit in on some of the sessions and stuff. So I would not really be available to have our normal meeting on the sixth. Um, so I'm wondering about moving that. Is the tenth possible, if anybody. Knows if that would work for them or not?
February tenth is a Monday, would that work, so?
It worked for me because I would be out of time on the sixth.
Okay. That work for everybody else, okay? So that would be February tenth, and then the second meeting in February would be?
Well, with that being said, I would prefer to keep it on the twentieth, if at all possible. Um, the, which would be the normal scheduled for that. Because we have to kind of get it on track somehow, and so then that would be two weeks before our first meeting in March on the sixth. And March is going to be very interesting, that is when all of the district meetings are held, which. As president of the municipal, it's kind of a, not mandatory, but it's kind of encouraged to try to attend, and of course. March can be kind of questionable as far as weather-wise, and that would depend on that, but. Um, I would like to try to attend as many of those meetings as I can, and they start, um. Got too many notes here. They start on March eighteenth, they run all that week and into the next week, and so. Um, I would be available to have the sixth, and. Then I would like to see about moving the second meeting to the seventeenth. I'm just kind of wanting to give you guys a heads up, um, I'm not saying we have to lock this in right now, I just want to get this on the calendar for you guys to can review. And um, then our district meeting for our district happens on April second. So, um. Then they finish up with the last district meeting on the third. So April meetings are kind of gonna get a, probably whack a little bit as well. So I'm kind of hoping maybe to move the seventh of April. And then the seventeenth back on track, yeah.
And what did you say about March? Which dates did you, were you thinking in March?
The tenth and the twentieth.
March tenth?
Oh, no, wait, wait, wait.
Seventeen, seventeen. Yeah, twenty seventeen, two, three, one. The sixth would be the, March would be the sixth and the seventh?
Yeah, the sixth, I'm sorry, sixth would be regular scheduled time, and then the seventeenth on a Monday, the second. In March, yeah. February would be the tenth and the twentieth.
When we do property taxes in March, too?
We do. Um, and that would be on the seventeenth as well, which. We've kind of done that before, too, it started early, I don't know what they're gonna look like this year, if anybody's gotten their tax. We told you, I don't think.
Sure, they're all gonna go down.
I bet, yeah. So, I mean, I can send out the email and kind of get these, I know it's kind of, I'm rattling a lot of dates off to you guys. But I just wanted to give this information out with you, find out if you did want to attend the RIB supper in February on the fourth. And then, um, I would put on the next meeting agenda, the twenty-seventh. These actual dates, so that we have them kind of lined out and included in the minutes so that people can kind of see that and. Does that make sense? Okay.
When was the RIB supper again, sir?
The um, fourth. That night. So we have our board meeting in the afternoon, and then supper that night, and then the fifth. Is when we go to uh, the Capitol for sitting in on sessions and stuff.
Thank you.
Which you guys are all welcome to do. Okay, so let me know, I guess, um. Don't, I, within the next couple of weeks, I don't remember if they did put a deadline on when they. Wanted the reservations for the supper, to plan the numbers and stuff, I don't know, but I can let you know that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, item number nineteen, Public Works in Fort Pierce.
Um, Tuesday, I picked up the know, the new uh, snow pusher. And got to use it today, it's very, very handy, it's really good, I appreciate you guys letting us get that. And tomorrow, the loader that we normally lease will be here. When we put stone, once it gets out here, at least it'll be here. Uh, we managed to, you know, get, get by with just one so far, and like the. Pusher that we recently got helped out today a lot and, and I guess I appreciate it. Uh, other than that, just been moving snow. I'd also like to ask, and I don't know for sure if it'll work out, but there's a annual training conference next week in Pier. Um, and I just kind of forgot about it, depending on if there's any rooms, I was wondering if you guys would let me go, I haven't. Been to training in quite a while, it's January fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth.
And where's that at?
Pier, over there.
Fourteenth, fifteenth, and second.
Yeah. What kind of training is it?
That's a water, this, um, let's see. They just have all kinds of different, uh, you know, they talked about water meters and water loss, and they have like an active shooter, and it's just all kinds of different trainings all over, like. G, GPS, G, G I S stuff, just. Lots of different things and get to talk to other guys from other towns and have a lot of vendors there.
So it's a public works?
Yes, yep, water, yep.
Does anyone have any issue with them going to that? Okay.
I'll be, I'll look into it and see.
Yeah.
And other than that, I don't.
Okay.
Does the, does your guys' uh, loader, the loader bucket, is everything working okay with that? I have heard that maybe there might be some gremlins in it.
It's good, the gremlins, yeah, I, I don't know, I've used it. Um, it's never happened to me, but. It's something we'll look into, I don't know, maybe has to do something with the, the flow.
Yeah, because you can shut the flows on and off. No, that could be it totally, I'm pretty sure.
That's the only thing I can think of, yeah, because there's a couple times I've had accidents, not accidents, this built some sand. So yeah, we can't, I'm looking into that, thanks for bringing that up.
Well, yeah, and I'm sure it's probably that flow would do it for you.
Okay, anything else? Sounds good, okay, for my uh, report, the only thing I uh, am going to report on is. Through planning and zoning, one of the things we're supposed to do at the January meeting each year is to give a uh, update on the building permits, so. I've, I'm sharing these documents with you, if you'd like to pass those down, and something I did late last night. And all this stuff is uh, take the information that Carolyn puts together, which this is her spreadsheet. So all I did was go through and total these, in twenty-twenty-two, uh, the total permits issued were six hundred and forty thousand dollars. New homes were a hundred and fifty thousand of that six forty, and the rest are like additions, garages, decks, sheds, and fences. So there was about four hundred and ninety thousand there. But in twenty-twenty-three, thanks to what you guys did as far as getting infrastructure in place. We had a two point one eight seven uh, total permits issued, and of that, there was a hundred, one million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars worth of homes that came in. And then eight hundred and ninety-two thousand in the other. Also, not included in this too, uh, point one million in twenty-twenty-three was the CTE addition for three point five million. So truly, we had a five point six million dollars worth of structures that came into wall in twenty-twenty-three. And then when we, I compared twenty-twenty-four, total permits issued was two point nine million. And of that two point nine, two point five million dollars worth of homes came into wall. And again, that only happened because of the infrastructure that you guys put in in Echo Valley, long before I got here, you started that. And then the Kelly uh, Avenue and the Gloria Street uh, that happened with. Um, Trent Pools coming in with Governor's Homes, as well as two stick-built homes there. And uh, if you've been out that way, all those homes, uh, we have a new resident in one of those new homes out there. And I just thought that was interesting, and that was a report that we learned in planning and zoning that we were supposed to be doing every year. So I shared that with you, that's my report for tonight.
So, Carolyn, did, how many dollars worth of? Or how many dollars worth of, for the permits themselves, what is that?
That would be on the, um.
With the fee structure?
Yeah, it's, it'd be on the revenue, which I've not gotten the bank reconciliations totally completed, I'm still working on disassembly yet, so I don't have that right in front of me. That's my new year's resolution is to get that on up so I can start using more software with that.
Okay. Any other thoughts? It certainly shows that there's growth, and then there's houses coming to wall, and uh, yeah, there's gonna be more of that, so. Okay, so that's what happened there, that moves us then to items for discussion, item number twenty-one, no action would be taken. Is there anything that anyone wants to bring before the council tonight? Seeing none, next city council meeting uh, will be Monday, January twenty-seventh, Monday, January twenty-seventh at six thirty uh, PM. And with that being said, we do have a need for executive session, so uh, Rick, could you help us?
I make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of legal and personnel issues according to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two. Parentheses five, parentheses one, sir.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Deputy Porch?
Thanks, Katie.
Katie, I am, I'm declaring us out of executive session, is there any other uh, business that needs to come before the council this evening? Hearing done, I declare us adjourned.